We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Gordon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord in heaven, we come to you in Jesus' name and we ask that you be with us as we make important decisions for the people in the city of Lima. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'd like to add John Boker to privilege of the floor for some community concerns and to add Communication Number 16, a letter from Lamont Monford.
Second. The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding John Boker under privilege of the floor and Communication Number 16. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Starting off tonight, we have a public hearing for an alley vacation at the 1,000 block of West Elm Street petitioned for by William and Marcia Mann. I'll have the clerk read the call.
Notice is hereby given that on the eighth day of September 2014 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers located at 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held on the following matter. Vacation of an unimproved and unnamed alley approximately 10-foot wide and 216-foot long, running north-south in the 1,000 block of West Elm Street between South Cole and South Jamison Streets. The purpose is to combine the unutilized alley with the adjacent parcels for a productive and residential use consistent with the other properties in the vicinity. This proposal was initiated by William and Marcia Mann, owners of the abutting properties located in the city of Lima, Ohio, and has been recommended and approved by the City Planning Commission. Any interested person or persons desiring to be heard on said matter may do so at the time and place here in specified. The reports, maps, and other documents pertaining to the above request are on file in the office of the Clerk of Council and are open to public inspection.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of the alley vacation in the 1,000 block of West Elm Street? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. For the second time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of the alley vacation in the 1,000 block of West Elm Street? The third and final call, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the alley vacation at 1,000 block of West Elm Street, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor. First, we have Mary Bryant regarding pit bulls. I'll remind all of our speakers, council rules allow for three minutes. We ask you to state your name and address at the beginning of your talk so that we have that for the record.
Okay, my name's Mary E. Bryant, 411 Marion Avenue, Lima, First Ward. I'm a mother, wife, grandmother, and a pit bull mommy and owner, and I've been owner of the pit bulls for 25 years. I would like to pass this picture around for each of you to look at. Okay, I am going back to the Lima ordinance, the new, but I'm also bringing up the old. This is in regard to the receive Lima, the recent Lima ordinance, which attempts to circumvent the Ohio Supreme Court decision State versus Cowan in the subsequent Ohio update dog legislation in the place to address that case. Cowan addressed the due process issue, that is, a person cannot be cited for violating the law harboring a dangerous animal without that per, well, without a dog, without that person first being given opportunity to rebut presumption. Thus, the owner has given notice that an officer believes the dog to be dangerous. If the citizen wants to appeal, it is the duty of the officer to defend his position in the court by clear and convincing evidence. Only if he is successful can the owner of the dog be charged with violating the law. The Ohio Legislature update the dog statutes and include through process of notification the right to challenge the classification of one's dog before the owner is cited for breaking the law. It is presumed that the Lima, that Lima is now properly given notification to owners of dogs claimed to be dangerous. However, the new Lima ordinance is now trying to classify dogs of a certain look and impose extra restrictions and penalties on the dog's owners and cite punishment those owners who violate the ordinance. Attorney Michelle Baummeister has a dog, which I passed around the picture, that her veterinarian was sure was a pit bull, part pit bull. A DNA test proved otherwise. She also had a dog named Lucy that everybody opinionated that it was part border collie. The dog's DNA indicated on the first, or on the second one, no border collie, but yes, was part pit bull. One of the breeds that Lima is trying to regulate. Therefore, any case where Lima is trying to prove that the dog is part pity will require the city to pay for DNA tests since just the look is not conclusive, no matter who is in the stand, on the stand making a guess.
We're at three minutes, Ms. Bryant.
Oh, is it? Okay. Well, I want to just, real quick, just say that we would like to invite the council to set up a committee who can explain and will work to protect citizens without punishing responsible dog owners in that will avoid any court fight. I'm asking that you guys would set a committee for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on privilege of the floor is John Boker.
Part of his privilege is allowing me time to get out of this chair and get out of there.
No problem.
Don't start the clock.
No, take your time, Mr. Boker.
Oh, don't, never say that to a senior. Big mistake.
Mr. Mayor, President, members of the council, members of the administration, I appear again before you this third time in 15 months, so you're probably getting tired of me. However, I'm very sad to be here tonight because, well, first of all, 2279 West Lane, so you know where to TP, Lima, Ohio. Okay, I appear here tonight to express my personal and professional concern regarding what I see as the deterioration of the quality of life in Lima. Now, I know that's kind of making everybody take a gasp, however, I'm going to enumerate. For example, Lima and Allen County is the number one, is number one in percent of unwed mothers in the state of Ohio out of 88 counties. Lima, Allen County, number one for unwed mothers. Lima and Allen County is experiencing an epidemic of heroin use and overdoses. I can give you the stats from the two major hospitals. They are not good. Number three, there are over 100 homeless people wandering the streets of Lima with nowhere to go. No warming center, no cooling center, nowhere. Not particularly good for the Chamber of Commerce bringing in new business. There's a very high unemployment rate. It fluctuates, but it's somewhere between 6% and 7%. And a high poverty rate and food stamp usage. Folks, that tells me we've got a situation in our city and in our county that needs a collaborative effort to address. But, and I apologize in advance for what I'm about to say, what is our city government doing for its voting, taxpaying citizens, protection, economic advancement, and quality of life? Well, here it comes. It approves the sale of a prime property at 232 Main Street for $8,000 to a convicted drug dealer for another bar in town, just what we need. Who are the silent partners that are arranging for the transfer of a previous liquor license that will contribute to the degeneration of our community's soul? Number two, the city refuses, at the present time, I'll qualify that, Tony, at the present time, refuses to sue the railroad to replace, repair, and the clear and present danger presented by the crossing on Cable Road south of Alida, which is truly a life-threatening experience if you're from out of town, have arthritis in your hands, and drive across there at the posted speed limit. There will be a fatality. I don't want it to happen. When it does, the lawyer is going to sue everybody in 10-mile radius for bazillions of dollars because there is malfeasance on part of everybody concerned, state of Ohio, the railroad, and everyone else. PUCO's inspection of April 1st said, "Everything we claim is true," but PUCO has no enforcement authority. They can't even slap the railroad on the wrist. What a pity. Talked to Mike DeWine, no enforcement authority. The city seems incapable of providing a warming center for the homeless. Why? Other cities in Lima, much smaller than other cities in Ohio, much more, smaller than Lima, seem to be able to do it. And, but what are we doing? Oh, my goodness. We're going after somebody who painted a mural. Heaven forbid, a mural on a building wall. Don't worry about the railroad tracks, don't worry about the homeless, don't worry about a drug dealer buying a prime piece of property for $8,000, but let's go after the people who put the mural up because they're in violation. I'm sorry, folks.
We're over.
I'm over?
Yep.
Of course I'm over. People in Michigan knew I could never say anything in three minutes. Thank you.
You rose to the challenge.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and Items B and C be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Item A and to receive and file Items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number One.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that Communication Number One be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place property maintenance tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Two receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Two, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to amend lack of first home Lima contract.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Three receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Three, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into contracts for CDBG projects.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Four receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Four, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into contracts for home projects.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Five receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Five, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with statewide Ford.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Six, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to amend Chapter 1690.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Seven, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Tom Hall Dealerships.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Eight, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the Court Administrator requesting a temporary probation officer position in the strength ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and file. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Nine, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Lima Security, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed and legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Ten, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Eleven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place demolition tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Eleven receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Eleven, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Twelve.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reinecke Ford Lincoln.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Twelve be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Twelve, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Thirteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to submit application for the state-issue wanted funds.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Thirteen be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Thirteen, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Fourteen.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to amend the contract with Miller Cable Company.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Fourteen be received and filed, and the Law Director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Fourteen and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Fifteen.
From the Director of Public Works regarding the Hall of Justice and municipal building generator.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number Fifteen be received and filed, and the Law Director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Fifteen and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation.
No legislation necessary, just receive and file.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to just receive and file Communication Number Fifteen.
Second.
All right. Motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Fifteen, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication Number Sixteen.
From Lamont Monford regarding resignation from the Civil Service Board.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that Communication Number Sixteen be received and filed and referred to the council as a whole.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file. Communication Number Sixteen, refer it to council's committee of the whole. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. Howard Elstro regarding building code and design review guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Lima Allen County Building Department is responsible for enforcing the Ohio Building Code and issuing commercial building permits within the city of Lima. The unincorporated townships of Allen County, the four contract jurisdictions which include Beaver Dam, Alida, Herod, and Lafayette. The department coordinates the approvals required for the issuance of building permits and inspections that are required by various agencies before the certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion can be issued. Residential buildings in the Lima community are enforced in accordance with the Residential Code of Ohio and issuance of the appropriate permits. The process starts with the property owner or agent ensuring that the site is zoned for the particular use, making applications, submitting plans, obtaining the required permits, requesting the required inspections, and obtaining certificates of occupancy. At the August 18th, 2014, meeting of Lima City Council, Diane Peterson Rogers addressed the necessity for filing a design review application and building permit for the artwork that had been attached to the 115119 North Elizabeth Street property. Ms. Rogers was correct in that the city of Lima notified Square Fair, Inc. of the necessity of these items after installation. It came to my attention through comments under miscellaneous business at the August 4th, 2014, meeting that the artwork had been attached to the building located at 115119 North Elizabeth. Prior to this, Ms. Rogers planned to attach the artwork to the building on the corner of Main and North Streets. As a courtesy, prior to the official notice being sent, I contacted the building owner, Mr. Scott Koenig, as well as Ms. Rogers, and informed them that they would be receiving a formal letter demanding compliance with the design review codes as well as the building permit requirement. I advised both that we would be as helpful as possible in getting the necessary authorizations and permits. Ms. Rogers met with the mayor myself in October of 2013 and asked what type of permissions would be needed for such artwork. I informed her at the time that a design review application would need to be filed as well as plans and a permit application, depending on the type of artwork that would be proposed and constructed. Design review requirements were legislated at the request of downtown property owners and downtown, Inc., to ensure that aesthetics in the downtown areas are maintained and the downtown continues to be an attractive area where businesses are interested in locating and investing. Council, through formal action in September 2001, adopted Ordinance 14101, establishing and defining special building criteria within the Design Review District in the city, which is Chapter 140901. The Design Review Board meets monthly when applications are submitted, and in this particular case, a design review application was received August 21st, 2014. The board will meet on September 11th to review it. Neither my office nor those I have spoken with on the Design Review Board have any reservation about the mural that was installed at 115119 North Elizabeth Street. In fact, without exception, everyone agrees it is a great location and enhancement to the downtown and that particular building. Clearly, as council is aware, Chapter 1409 requires those proposing changes to an external architectural fixture of any structure within the Design Review District to apply for a certificate of appropriateness prior to an alteration being made. This allows the Design Review Board to review and discourage inappropriate alterations, including signage or artwork that some organization or building owners may be intending to advance. As to the issuance of plan review and permitting, keep in mind that the city of Lima serves as a certified building department under the authority of the Ohio Board of Building Standards. We are required to apply the building code in an equal, fair, and impartial manner. In the case at hand, this artwork measures eight foot by 60-foot and weighs over 800 pounds. Artwork of this type is classified as a sign, and as appropriate, plans depicting the attachment of the sign or the artwork to the building are required to be filed and reviewed in a permit pending the review of the Design Review Board. Details of the attachment were submitted to our office on August 27th and were reviewed on August 29th, and pending the design review process of September 11th, the permit will be issued. I ask that council and the community take this opportunity to reflect on the value of building standards. The adoption of standardized building codes, whether commercial or residential, is necessary for the protection of life and property. Absent building codes, buildings and structures can be and have been erected in unsafe manner. One can cite numerous examples of catastrophic failure of buildings and structures that have not complied with long-established codes and construction methods. As previously stated, this artwork is 60-foot long and weighs over 800 pounds. A structure of this size and weight falling or being blown off a building during a windstorm could inflict serious damage or even cause a fatality if not properly attached to the building. The effort and small cost associated with plans and permits is little trade-off for the safety of the general public. Finally, I appreciate council support of city personnel that administers the building code each and every day. Their professionalism and dedicated commitment to code administration ensures that the public, when they go to work, shop, dine, visit, or live in a building within the city of Lima, that they are protected against inferior workmanship and design. Thank you.
Mr. Elstro, before you sit down, I have a question for you, and I guess for you and for the Law Director. But, and I understand everything you said, and I understand that things have to be done properly, but I think what a lot of people may not understand, and I guess the impression I've had, if something were to happen to that sign, that it got blown off because it was not properly attached, is the city in a position of liability if we have not gone through and issued a permit? I mean, it seems to me that we're at least would get enjoined in any kind of lawsuit and would at least have to work to get out of being a party to that lawsuit. Am I correct on that, Tony?
Mr. President, I think that's a correct statement, I guess.
Okay. So, I guess it goes to the point of, you know, there's been a lot of comment in the public about, what are they worried about, you know, this painting that's gone up? The fact of the matter is, getting out of such a legal situation or claim costs taxpayer dollars. And whether it's Tony's time, there's a cost to it. Whether it's paying an outside attorney to get us out of it, there's a $5,000 cost to it. For the mere simple procedure of going through the proper building and permitting of putting it up. Unfortunate, inconvenient, maybe, but I guess... Unfortunate, inconvenient, maybe, but I guess, I just wanted to make sure that I was right on that, okay? Because there's a lot of times that oversight, looking over something, does come back to haunt us. And we've been lucky, haven't been any windstorms yet. Hopefully, the whole thing will be found to have been fastened properly and meet the appropriate standards, but it really is something that, there's a lot more to it that we have to consider. So, I appreciate your department taking care of it, and I appreciate the information you've given us this evening.
Thank you.
Next is Vince Oger regarding pharmacy benefit management.
Mr. President, it's my understanding that Councilors Lowe and Glenn may have had a question about Caremark requests from last city council meeting, so I want to take a few minutes, if I may, to address that. The city of Lima contracts, and hopefully you should have a copy of this in front of you, I meant to leave a copy for each council member. The city of Lima contracts with Caremark to provide pharmacy benefit management services for its 1,100 members, covered under the city's health plan. We access Caremark through the health purchasing organization Employers Health, of which the city is a member. The annual fee for membership is $750 per year. Employers Health has over 200 member organizations across the country. Public sector members in Ohio include the cities of Cincinnati, Akron, Canton, Dublin, Findlay, and Mansfield. Employers Health uses the leverage of its 650,000 members to negotiate with PBM suppliers to provide PBM services to employers at a significantly reduced cost. A key aspect of these services is the pharmacy network and the subsequent discounts from submitted charges. Caremark is one of two separate PBMs available through Employers Health. Caremark provides the following services to the city of Lima. They provide a complete mail order pharmacy, access to a retail pharmacy network, and that is a national network. They audit network pharmacies for compliance with pricing agreement to assure the discounts that are negotiated or realized. They support plan implementation and administration, determine and monitor member eligibility for plan services, manage and maintain the plan formulary, manage the generic distribution, excuse me, manage the generic substitution program, provide drug utilization services, which of course includes monitoring drug interactions, therapeutic duplications, known drug sensitivity, overutilization, insufficient or excessive drug usage, and early or late refills. They provide a 24-hour member support call line. They provide communication materials on plan design and/or changes in the drug marketplace. They report claims data and provide SAS 70 report to the city auditor's office as required. They provide a managed mail order services, provide the Caremark Direct program, which provides members access to prescriptions for items that are not on the formulary at a reduced cost. They monitor drug classification changes and communicate such, and they provide specialty pharmacy services, including the Specialty Guideline Management Program. According to the executive summary for 2013 provided by Caremark, as verified by Employers Health, the discount from retail pricing for prescriptions filled for city employees and their dependents was $885,128. Assuming we were to terminate the contract with Caremark and perform these services in-house, and that we could achieve half of that discount, the additional cost to the city would be in excess of $400,000 in lost discounts, and that's before we attain the resources to actually do the work. The estimate of labor resources to do this work would include an account clerk and a pharmacist. With salary and benefits, a pharmacist would cost the city about $100,000 per year, and an account clerk one would be another $53,000 per year. Caremark processes about 12,000 prescription claims for city employees and their dependents each year. My rough estimate for not using the PBM to manage the prescription drug plan is an additional cost to the city of between $500,000 and $700,000 per year. That's about a 70% increase. The key cost consideration of a prescription drug plan is in maximizing discount opportunities. This estimate does not include software necessary to manage the electronic submission and payment of prescription drug claims. I've also compared the pricing that we get through Caremark to Ohio's BEST Prescription, which is a state-endorsed prescription discount program, which is managed by a PBM, pharmacy benefit management company. As compared to Ohio's BEST, we save about $110,000 per year by using Caremark as opposed to Ohio's BEST RX. Our office continually monitors the external market for opportunities to reduce healthcare cost. Based upon the information I have at this time, we believe the relationship the city has with Medical Mutual of Ohio, which provides our health benefits, and Caremark by way of Employers Health assures that high-quality healthcare services are delivered to city employees and their family members at the lowest available cost to the citizens of Lima. Therefore, we ask for your support of Ordinance 200-14. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Lieutenant, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First off, how, we're under contract today.
That's correct.
Until when?
Till the end of 2016. Extension would be through 17, and then at any time with a six-month notice, we can terminate the contract.
So, my question is, I guess, I mean, we're in 2014.
That's correct.
Why are we jumping on this bandwagon today that you assure us it's the best program? Are you sure it is? I mean, I guess I question that because we're sitting here, 2014, we're under contract with them until 2016, and we want to extend another year. Do we have other avenues?
Not that are as cost-effective as this, and as I indicated in the communication to you at the last meeting or to Council last meeting, there's an opportunity to save an additional $60,000, $60,000-plus over the three years that we're proposing. What Employers Health does every year is they actually enter the negotiations with Caremark to take a look at other opportunities and to enhance the contract from the members' perspective, not Caremark's perspective. And so, we get it, we jump on board because it's an opportunity to save money, and so that's what we're trying to do. But as I mentioned, at any time with a six-month notice, we can terminate the contract with Caremark. So, that's our out if we need to do that.
So, even between now and 2017, if we found a different source that would save us more money, we could change in a six-month period?
That is correct. That is correct. We could do that.
So, I'm still guessing why we're having this additional savings on the years that we've already contracted with them.
Because that's, because that's what, that's the exchange. The exchange is basically this. Employers Health says, hey, we think you guys can do better. Caremark says, okay, we'll do better, but what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to require your members to extend the contract another year. That's what we're, that's what we're doing. For $60,000 over three years, we extend it for another year, yet we can terminate with a six-month notice at any time. Now, we would have to return that savings if we did that, that $60,000 savings.
Be clear, doing this increases our savings by $60,000.
That is correct.
The way you just stated it sounded like a loss.
Yes, it increases the savings that we have by 60,000-plus, yeah. Additional savings.
Mr. McLean, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. McLean?
So, our bonus is, you telling me by us extending it to 16, they give us the French benefits of...
Actually, through 17.
17, 16, 17?
17.
17. We gonna say that $60,000 is a part of their criteria for having this, right?
It's a part of their criteria. Their requirement is that we extend till the end of 2017. Our opportunity is that additional savings over the three-year period, which is over $60,000. I didn't have the number exactly what was in the communication.
$60,000.
We could take advantage of the savings now.
That's correct.
We can do nothing and wait until the end of 2016 and renegotiate a contract, and we may or may not see that kind of savings.
Well, we would spend, we would spend that $60,000 savings, we would lose it.
Yeah, you wouldn't.
That's correct. And the thing I would remind Council of, at any point with a six-month notice, we can terminate the contract. The worst-case scenario is this additional savings that we're talking about, we would have to give at least a portion of that back.
Oh, my God.
Okay?
Excuse me here.
Ms. Vines?
So, make sure I'm understanding, the $60,000 savings to the city is spread over the remaining life of this contract?
The next three years.
The next three years.
Starting January 1, 2015.
So, we look at $20,000 per year.
It'd be 2015, 2016, 2017.
Okay, 15, 16, 17.
Yeah. And that's based on current drug utilization trends, assuming they remain the same.
Got you.
Which can or cannot. Well, that's always, that can change year to year. It is, that's kind of a moot point.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions, Mrs. Vines?
No, no, sir. Thank you.
All right, Rogers, thank you.
Okay, next, we have the Public Works Committee report. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee met August 25th. In these chambers, members of the committee are Counselor Tevin, Counselor Gordon, and myself as chair. There were three subjects before the committee, the first one being carpeting in the council chamber, the second one leases of city property, and the third subject was real estate foreclosure ownership issues. The first subject, the carpeting, Howard Elstro was recognized and gave a brief background of the history of the building, the carpeting, history of the building, and was asked by Counselor Tevin what his recommendations would be, and his recommendation, based on the history, was to first do carpet cleaning of the entire building, which he had noted had not been done since 2007 with the economic downturn, and then based on those results, we would look at the carpeting in the council chamber. But also, he recommended replacement of the carpet in the second-floor conference room. The, he also informed the committee that there were other emergency needs to the building due to the south side of the building having a water leak, and he agreed that the carpet cleaning and replacement of the carpet in the second-floor conference room should be done as soon as possible, hopefully before winter season. He was asked by the chair what account this would come from. It's the account that covers maintenance, but some funds may have to be approved, but we will know that later. With no other action required, the, we closed the discussion with a provision that, and I need to add this to the report, if I may, and submit it to the clerk. Mr. Elstro was asked to provide a five-year or four-year plan, whatever year, replacement of the next, at the next finance budget hearings in 2015, where the committee can allocate and move funds based on those recommendations and phasing in costs. So, with no other action required, a motion was made to table the discussion but remained in committee. Leases, the second subject, leases of city property, that was brought about by LACNIP, who had asked for funding to the CDBG program. It was referred to this committee, and it concerned a replacement need of an AC unit and boiler at the former Fire Station Number Four building on Spring Street. Where the concern lies is the reassurance, since they have a one-year contract, an investment which they had approximately estimated at $19,000. If they put that kind of investment into a city-owned building, what assurance they would have of remaining in the building and/or receiving a prorated adjustment if they were asked to leave. Our law director presented to the committee a section from another lease covering capital improvements, and discussion followed. Counselor Tevin asked what is the lease agreement with LACNIP. Now, and it's a one-year lease, and I need to correct, based on Counselor Miles' note in pre-council, the date should read December 1st, 2013 to December 1st, 2014, but it's automatically renewed if no notice is given by November 15th. Mr. Elstro met with Nell Lester, toured the building, was quite satisfied with the upkeep and the maintenance of the building. He was asked by counsel that evening, when it was referred to the committee, to get his input and contact, possibly for an estimate, with our contacts through the city, where he did provide a number where it was approximately $12,000 savings versus the $19,000 cost. He was thanked by the committee for that involvement. Counselor Tevin asked what would be acceptable by LACNIP. As far as language, Nell Lester, representing LACNIP, stated that she would not, could not make a decision tonight without going back to the Board. It was then discussed that she and Howard and the law director should meet to, she should come to those two to submit from the Board what language they would like to see in future leases, and I believe some of that is going on right now. No other action required. It was closed for discussion, but still remains in committee. Real estate foreclosure, basically, this was a discussion and public information from the law director, Tony Geiger, education of the public and council and the committee members of what foreclosure is, issue of ownership, is a foreclosed property is a matter of state law. Neither the city nor commissioners have the authority to change that. The courts have constantly, consistently ruled that until a foreclosed house has been sold at a sheriff's sale, the individual, not the bank, is still the owner. There's some frustration in some of the departments where notices are sent to property and the owner listed says, you know, I either filed for bankruptcy or I'm, the bank foreclosed and I walked away. Well, that doesn't end their responsibility, and in some cases, the bank even stops the foreclosure until a sheriff's sale is held. They were advised that they can still remain into, remain in the house until such time a judge, is, a judge orders them to vacate. With no further action, discussion, a motion was made by Counselor Tevin to adjourn and seconded by Counsel Gordon. The motion carried and was adjourned at 7:10 PM. Mr. President, I move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report as presented by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to ordinances, Ordinance 19414.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 19414 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19414 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19514.
Authorizing the transfer of cash between certain funds as herein described.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 19514 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19614.
Levying special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 19614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19714.
Levying a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Ordinance 19714 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19614.
Levying special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 19614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 19714.
Levying a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 19714 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 19714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 214.
Amending ordinance 22909.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 214 on its first reading as amended. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 19514 has been passed on its first reading as amended by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 214.
Amending ordinance 22909.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance number 2014 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20214.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Ryneiki Ford Lincoln of Lima for the purchase of two vehicles.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 20214 be placed on second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance 20214 on second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 20314.
Authorizing the mayor to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission requesting state issue one funds.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 20314 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 20314 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20414.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Homeall Dealerships for the purchase of a Dodge cargo van.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 20414 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 20414 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Statewide Ford for the purchase of a Ford interceptor utility vehicle.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 20514 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 20514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20614.
Enacting Chapter 1619 to establish inspection fees for services of the Lima Fire Department completed pursuant to the Ohio Fire Code.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 20614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 20614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20714.
Amending Chapter 456 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 20714 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 20714 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20814.
Amending Section 454.07 of codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 20814 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 20914 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I will be abstaining. I am on the board at LACCA, all the LACCA-related ordinance, I will be abstaining.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Abstaining.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 20914 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 21014.
To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the Future Inc. for housing maintenance training.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21014 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 21014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 21014 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 21114.
To authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with New Lima Housing for the Future Inc. for administrative services under the city's housing program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21114 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 21114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 21214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 21214.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen County Council on Community Affairs to provide loan closing services and down payment assistance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 21214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 21214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 21414.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs for home update counseling services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21314 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 21314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Abstaining.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 21414 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 21514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lima Allen Council on Community Affairs to provide fair housing services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 21514 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 21514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just want to do a little comment real quick, and I do appreciate the work they have been doing. A lot of folks been calling, they've been taking care of the things they need to do on their fair housing. I want to thank all the people who's working on that fair housing. I know their job would be a chaos because we get a lot of calls about different things there. I want to say thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Abstaining.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 21514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 21614.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rhodes State College for implementation of a manufacturing skills development program.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 21614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 21614 on its first reading.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 216-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 217-14.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with United Way of Greater Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that ordinance 217-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 217-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I will be abstaining. Sir, going board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miles. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Abstaining.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 217-14 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 218-14.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bradfield Community Center.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 218-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 218-14 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'd like to take this opportunity, those of you here tonight, you hear us passing all these involving LACCA, Rhodes State, CDBG, these came out of the committee meeting chaired by Counselor Glenn, and I want to thank Amy Odom, Director of the Department, the hard work in preparing all this and running the programs, allocating the funds, and this is what is allowing us in the next cycle coming up October. I think we had a healthy discussion this year with the last three ordinances of Rhodes State, United Way, and Bradfield receiving funding, and if I could, Mr. President, if I could ask Ms. Odom to come up and speak. No? Okay.
Ms. Odom, evidently there are some questions for you.
Well, she shared something at a Hope Neighborhood Meeting last week when the administration was there at the mayor's focus, and some of these earlier ordinances are benefiting from that, additional funds, and I'd like you to...
Counsel, Counsel President, I believe what Ms. Adams is referring to is that there was an amendment to an earlier contract with LACCA. We are fortunate this year that basically during the consolidated hearing plan process, planning process, I had mentioned to you that there were some changes going on in home. The home funds, we can only spend for low to moderate income housing development. Tonight, what counsel voted on was to basically take some additional funds, some funds that had been unallocated or unutilized by the city of Lima that HUD had identified for us, and stated that if we wanted to use those funds, we needed to allocate them to a current project before the end of the month. Therefore, we did so and placed those funds with LACCA in the down payment housing counseling program. Bottom line, the good news is that there'll be about seventeen more homeowners in the city of Lima that will be able to receive down payment assistance this year in addition to the funding that we are receiving for the new CDBG year which begins in October. We have received notification from HUD that those funds will be available as of October one. That's also good news. Sometimes, some years, they delay the release of those funds, so we should be ready with the actions taken by counsel tonight to actually get signed contracts with all these agencies that were mentioned this evening and begin on time October one.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Ms. Odom, I think you mentioned at Hope that LACCA has agreed to hold...
Thank you very much. That is also another thing that we'd like to identify, that LACCA will be holding three more classes for homeownership, and we want to thank our partners at LACCA because we're not paying them to do that. That is outside of their contract with the city of Lima to provide housing counseling classes, but they are agreeing to do that because they have the additional funds, the down payment assistance, to make available to homeowners. To get that down payment assistance, you have to take the class. They're providing three additional ones at no charge to the city, so we'd like to thank them to stepping up the plate on that. Thank you for their reminder.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all.
Ms. Adams. If there's no further discussion, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Which one are we doing?
You don't have board.
Yes. Yes. You start talking about LACCA again.
Thank you, and I vote yes. Ordinance 218-14 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Given the lateness of the hour, we'll dispense with miscellaneous... Mr. Gordon. Miscellaneous business.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Chief Martin and the Lima Police Department. I had a, I was, arose by my, my daughter pounding on my bedroom door at midnight, and she said that someone was pounding on our front door and threatening and wanting to come into our house, which is not very wise to do that on the first ward city council's front door. But I ran downstairs and, of course, he had taken off, and I called the Lima Police Department, and man, they had a quick response, and pretty soon they had a guy in handcuffs. So, you know, I just wanted to thank the guys that were on third shift and, you know, if they could have got him first, maybe I wouldn't have got woken up, but you know. But anyways, I appreciate that. The next thing is that the Fraternal Order of Police, Lima Lodge 21, are having annual Pancake Day Saturday, October 4th, from six to one at the FOP Hall, and all you can eat pancakes. So, that's always a good deal to get out there and eat pancakes for six bucks in advance and seven dollars at the door. I also wanted to, I took note, I've been told that a couple people like to watch me on GTV2. Sorry about that, the rest of you guys. But I thought it'd be important to make mention of my mother, who enjoys seeing my face once in a while, and also a young lady that I met when we were doing a visitation at the Baton Rouge Nursing Home named Elsie, so I wanted to say hello to both of them, and the last thing, just to remind people to be good to each other. That'll be it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Hopefully, the camera did a close-up on you as you were addressing your mother and...